Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you here. Appreciate you being here very much. And as we started our meeting, I want you to know that certainly you can speak on any of the agenda items that you'd like. I will call your attention to, for those who haven't been here in the last couple of meetings, to the clock. We had to change a little bit on our guidelines and to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. So we're asking to hold your comments to five minutes. And now, if council wants to ask questions after that, then that's fine. We're not going to worry about the five minutes when that's going on. And there'll be special times, too, with presentations and that kind of thing, that we can go longer. But if you will, and I've been saying this now to the last several meetings, and I'll say it again, just so we catch everyone. And so I just wanted to let you know, to know that. At this time, we will have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance to our flag.
May we pray? Our God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for another day to serve mankind. We thank you for our employees and our volunteers who are on the front line every day, giving of their time and talent to this community. You've given us life, dear God, a reasonable portion of health and strength, and you've given us family, and you've given us friends. And for this, dear God, we give thanks to you. Heavenly Father, we call upon wisdom tonight as we discuss the items on our agenda. Guide us in the way of truth and by your Spirit. If there's anything within our hearts that's not pleasing to your sight, we ask you to remove it right now, Lord. Grant us peace within ourselves and peace within our community. Teach us to work together and the benefits of unity. Help us remember that all things work together for good to those who serve you. And we promise to acknowledge your gift and praise in whatever we do. In your mercy, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There is one other thing I'd like to mention to those who may not know. Council has selected a new city manager, Mr. John Clemm. Probably everybody knows that now from the publicity in the paper, but just in case. And he will be with us starting in April 27, Monday. John has more than thirty years of experience in the field of public administration and public service, as a state legislator, city manager, and town administrator, and more. We're certainly very pleased to have John as our next city manager. And ask that you and all of our citizens give John a warm and friendly welcome when he arrives in Aiken. So we appreciate that. So far, I've had a couple of conversations or emails, Roger, and other staff members have had a million, I think. Right, Roger? Back and forth. And that's been a good thing, because he's asking a lot of questions and getting a lot of answers. And so, when he gets here, he'll know a lot more than if he just stepped off the train, you know, to come. Okay. Council, do we have any items to add or deletions to the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move to the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the work session of March 19, 2015, and the regular meeting of March 23, 2015. Do we have motion in second for approval?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please. All in favor? Pass unanimously. Item 1, business first item, is the discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees.
We have no appointees or reappointments for council's consideration, but there are fifteen individuals that are positions that would be happy to entertain any appointments that council would have at this time.
Okay. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I have several. I have Ms. Sharon Brown to continue on the Arts Commission. Regina Brackett for the Accommodations Tax Committee. Ms. Martin Buckley for the Building Code Appeals Committee. John Horvath for the Housing Authority. And Linda Lucas for the Senior Commission.
Very good. Any others?
Bob Nibbou.
Okay. They will be on our agenda for the next meeting for approval. Item 3, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for property located at 3,000 Reserve Club Drive in Woodside.
Skip number two. Did I? Yes, sir. Number two. Number two.
Just anxious. Second reading of a public hearing of an ordinance to approve repurposing FC-PSD funds. Mr. Liddick, please.
Yes, sir. We have talked about this the last couple of meetings. At the last meeting, you asked that $250,000 be allocated for software and public safety. This amount of money, plus what's in the budget, should be sufficient to fund either continuing with New World or obtaining a different software for public safety to use next year. We originally were going to divide it into two separate years, but this will give you enough funding to do it all at one time. So for city council's consideration, this is the second reading of the ordinance to change the funding and repurposing the projects shown in the attached exhibit for CPST 2 and 3.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve, as amended, if you will, with the computers in there. And I would also say that we need to be sure the computers are done in the fiscal year 2015, 2016, so we don't carry that over. I think that's an important item to do. So that's my motion, is to approve this, and that we do the computers before June 30 of 2016.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Seconds, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Show of hands.
Would that preclude him doing it earlier if he wanted to?
He didn't do it earlier.
They are already seeking bids on that project, and if all would go well, it may be this summer or fall that we'd be able to institute that.
The sooner the better, but what I want to be sure is not one of these end-of-the-year procure items.
So they're already moving forward on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good point.
A show of hands for approval. Passes unanimously. Item 3, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for property located at 3,000 Reserve Club Drive in Woodside Plantation.
Yes, sir. I'm going to read it by its title. It's an ordinance amending the concept plan for property located at 3,000 Reserve Club Drive and owned by Woodside Golf LLC. Council heard about this at the last meeting. There was some concern about parking. I think they were able to answer those questions for you. Essentially, they're increasing the building size from 9,100 square feet to 22,000 square feet. There is also some concern about the roadway, going back to the homes that are going to be behind the new club. We received a letter today from the president of the Woodside Plantation Owners Association, which he signed, and from Diana Peters, both agreeing in principle to the road and that the Woodside Property Owners Association, once the road's built and meets their specifications, intend to go ahead and look at accepting that road into their system. So they felt comfortable with the roadway that would be going in and through the parking lot area. City Council approved this ordinance on the first reading at their March 23 meeting. For council's consideration, the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for property located at 3,000 Reserve Club Drive for expansion of the clubhouse.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Any discussion?
Just curious to ask Pat, are you going to hire additional employees with this growth? Just curious. Yes, okay.
Any other comments? Show of hands, please. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 4, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the agreement with FC Transportation Infrastructure Bank for the University Parkway Widening Project.
Yes, these next two ordinances are really companion with one another. The University Parkway was approved by council in November of last year, and then in January, you approved the second reading of an ordinance for SIP funding for the Doherty at Whiskey Road project. They have come forward with a request with the city. They have not signed the agreements yet. And in looking at the agreements, Jim Holly, who represents the State Infrastructure Bank through Gary Smith, has requested the addition of sections 6.21 and 6.23. Those are highlighted in yellow. The first one's on page 137. Essentially, it's stating that these funds cannot be used if there's any lawsuit or legal disagreement, and it can't be used for landscaping of the project unless we're disturbing the landscaping with our roadway project. With this approval, my understanding and Gary's understanding is that they will then finally sign these agreements, and we'll be able to move forward with the project. So for your consideration tonight, this is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the intergovernmental agreement for the University Parkway Widening Project with SIP.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the ordinance.
Second. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Passes unanimously. Item 5, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the agreement with FC Transportation Infrastructure Bank for Doherty Road at Whiskey Road Widening Project.
Yes, sir. I'm just going to read it by its title. It's an ordinance amending ordinance number 01262015 to authorize the city of Aiken to enter into an amended intergovernmental agreement with the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank for the Doherty Road at Whiskey Road Widening Project. As we discussed, this is to amend sections 6.21 and 6.23. This is the second reading and public hearing ordinance amending the intergovernmental agreement for Doherty at Whiskey Road Intersection Project with SIP.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second for approval of this?
I still move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion?
I have a question in relation to item 2 on the new agenda or new business, the approval to enter into contract with WR Tool for Right-Away Acquisition Services. Is that covered under this cost, or is that the city cost to do for right-of-way? Because I recall some discussion when this came up a couple of years ago about who pays for what when we get down to right-of-way requisition and so forth.
On the Doherty at Whiskey Road project, we are not using any of our local funds for this project. It's supposed to be paid 100% through SIP.
Okay. And then, and so the $33,000 plus the property that we procure would be part of it?
Should be paid for on SIP.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, show of hands, please. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Under new business, item 1, approval of engineering contract for public safety training ground.
Yes, sir. This really did not need to come before council for approval, but I thought it was important that you understand the status and where we're at. So I'm bringing it to you for approval anyways. It is under $10,000, but the city has an agreement to go forward with the engineering for work at the public safety training ground. One is to do the engineer on the assessment of the burned building, and the other one is to look at structural modifications. Once that engineering is done, then we would be able to come back and do the full design and have council, once the prices come in, to authorize the funding from the CPST 3 to complete this project. So for your consideration tonight, this is approval to enter into an agreement with Morn Associates to perform an assessment of the burned building at the public safety training ground.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Discussion?
I have a question. I think one thing, and Mr. Liddick touched on it, on all of the capital project sales task, we've asked for several years, the preliminary work that needs to be done on those, even though it's less than 10,000, I think it'd be wise to advise council, because, you know, the 8,900 is going to quickly turn into hundreds of thousands. So I think on these projects, we'd asked before that any type of engineering functions or whatever's done in preparation for the big work to be brought to council as information, if nothing else.
Yeah. Normally, I would have probably put this in the issues and updates just to inform you.
And that would have been okay.
But again, I felt it was important enough that this project and council's interested in it, that you'd at least be informed as to what we're proceeding with.
Very good. Thank you.
Was this the only company that we received estimate from?
Yes. They deal, there are not very many structural engineering firms that deal just strictly in structural work.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Show of hands, please. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 2, approval of contract for acquiring right-of-way for Doherty Road.
Yes, this was also already mentioned by Councilmember Edner. The city has been waiting to move forward on acquiring the right-of-way. We had an agreement that when I came here 10 months ago from Tool Engineering to go forward and acquire this is 11 pieces of property that we'll have to get a construction easement and four pieces of property, three if you include the construction easement, that we need to actually acquire right-of-way. There is a map that you have on the back of this. It's hard to see, but it does show in yellow the construction easements that we'll have to acquire. And then the red is the right-of-way that we'll have to acquire. The bowling alley, the structure itself will not be touched. It could remain where it's at. Same thing with Walgreens and the other corner. There's no structural buildings, and it's really just taking a small piece of the corner of the right-of-way that will be needed. I've questioned George a couple of different times on, it seems awfully high, $33,000. And we talked to Tool about this, and it's the fact that they have to negotiate, and each separate piece of property, according to state acquisition, needs to have a lot of paperwork that goes along with it. And that's why we have such a large expense to acquire these individual pieces. So for your consideration tonight, this is approval to enter into contract with WR Tool Engineering for the right-of-way acquisition at $33,850.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
What is a construction easement?
That's a temporary easement where, while maybe they're digging up or burying utility lines, some of the dirt and other material will go over in that area. And then when they get done, they're able to restore it to the original, if there was landscaping there before, to whatever was there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Passes unanimously. Item 3, approval of the contract for Dumpster Depot to provide recycling services.
It's interesting that we're going to be celebrating Earth Day on Saturday, and that this agreement is coming before you at this time. I recall 25 years ago, when we started the whole process, each of the individuals' homeowners got three different containers or baskets. One was yellow, one was green, and another blue. And so one of them, you put in there your plastics. One of them, you put in glass, and the other one, you put in any paper product. And then we had, we started off with just literally having dumpsters out there we hand-loaded it into while we experimented. And we eventually got a truck that had compartments that you'd lift these containers into to keep them all separated. The city in turn had, at the old landfill, just a pile of cans, pile of glass, pile of papers, and we did all of our own
Sorting.
Separation, sorting, and then bundling, only to find out that it was a lot of work. So a few years later, the city of North Augusta got a grant to open up a MRF. Basically, this MRF, you take the materials, you put it on a conveyor belt, and along the conveyor belt, you have about 12 individuals, six on each side, separating out the paper from the plastic and from the cans and the glass, and whether it's mixed glass, green, brown, clear. Very expensive operation. At that time, we were paying North Augusta $30 a ton just to accept our recyclables, or that equated to about $30,000 a year that we were paying North Augusta to accept our materials. About five years ago, we had a company out of Columbia and one out of Augusta that said, "We'll take your material for free." We looked at the distance that it was, and compared to $30 a ton, doing it for free was a much better proposal. So we went back to North Augusta and said, "We need to change our contract." And so they started accepting all of our material for free. We recently had Dumpster Depot came to us, and actually, not recently, probably about six months ago, with the idea that if we went ahead and had the same type of operation that North Augusta and spent the several hundreds of thousand dollars in capital for this equipment, would the city of Aiken consider, for the first couple of years, just giving us their material? We looked at it and calculated the number of miles we're going to North Augusta versus where Dumpster Depot is going to have their facility in the old Felon building, that we could save tens of thousands of dollars just in the travel cost between fuel and the wear and tear of our equipment, plus the amount of time that we are on the road going back and forth to North Augusta. So over the last 30 to 60 days, Tim Cokely has been working with Norman concerning this, and we have before you tonight a proposal for Dumpster Depot to receive our recycling at no cost. And then after they get into operation or get their business going, that we would then enter into a more formal agreement and determine how we could go ahead and receive hopefully some of the money that they will be making with their operation. So before you tonight, as a request to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Dumpster Depot LLC for receipt of recyclables collected by Solid Waste Division of the Public Service Department 20 years after we started this whole program.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay. We have second. Any discussion?
Oh, I again echo the comment. It's a wonderful thing to do. It's a, I've looked at it carefully. It's a win-win, and it's fitting, as Roger said, that we're doing it during Earth Week.
Quick remark. I want to make sure that, I think it's a great project, too. I know it's an extreme investment and a big undertaking for Norman, and I applaud him for having the gumption. But I want to make sure that before we start taking our stuff to them, that all the appropriate permits and requirements are in place, so that we don't end up in profit.
I think he
Also, we need to mention Saturday is the
Earth Day?
Earth Day, right outside here and in the alley and that. Dumpster Depot and a couple other is the major contributor, and I've forgotten, there's 30 or 40 businesses out here, so if Mother Nature treats us well, it'll be a big to-do. So it starts at nine o'clock on Saturday morning.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious to hear from Norman if he would just give us a brief comment about how that process would work at the Felon plant in terms of receiving that. Are you prepared to do that tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Norman has also given us some dumpsters to, we're cleaning up Crosland Park Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, and he's loaned us some of his dumpsters.
Yes. Just speaking. We'll hear you.
If anyone out front, he'll hear you.
All right. So tell me, what would you like to hear?
Just give us the process. Felon, the waste is going to go to Felon, and what happens there?
It is. It is. And guys, I want to start by thanking the council for taking this up. And also, I want to highlight that we plan on doing this operation with opportunity employees, employees that may be, people that may be at risk, especially around the surrounding neighborhoods. We've got a program that we've designed with Goodwill, also with Megiddo Dream Station, where we're going to be hiring people that may be passed over by a lot of other companies. And you may think that that's a risk, but I want you to know that our team is made up of a lot of these individuals already, and we won the Small Business of the Year with employees that everyone else passes up on. So there are some fantastic people out there. Maybe they just don't have the opportunity. The other thing that I want to talk about is that this is brand-new money that's coming to Aiken. This isn't money that's being passed around from business to business in Aiken. This money has been going to North Augusta, and they've been utilizing this money for the betterment of their community. And this is just the beginning of what we want to do with Solid Waste in the city of Aiken. There's a lot of exciting things, and you don't have time to hear about it all tonight, but we have a plan that's going to move us not only forward in where we are today, but three years from now, you're going to be excited, and you're going to be extremely pleased with what we've done with the trust that you put into us. But we are ready to receive product at the old RE Felon building. We call it the new Dumpster Depot building. And we are prepared with the permits from DEHEC. They're aware of what we're doing. They're supportive of what we're doing. But the product will come in the door. It'll go into a bunker. From there, we'll place it on the line. It'll run through some sortation equipment that separates it. And then we will have, starting off, we'll have somewhere between 12 and 16 people that are going to pick this waste off the line. This is entry-level positions, but this is not low-pay positions. There's not a single person at Dumpster Depot that is minimum wage. We show people dignity by paying them more than minimum wage, and in return, they give us the performance that you just wouldn't believe. But at the end of the process, all the product is bulk-bailed. We will find secondary markets for all the material. And the reason that we're asking that you give us the first two years to fill this out is because today, we don't, we know how much material is being recycled in Aiken, but we don't know the breakdown of the material. So I can't really tell you what that is going to generate, but we believe by the end of year one, we're going to figure this thing out. We're going to use those numbers to go out and find better sources for people to buy the product, and we think that this is going to be a big win for the city of Aiken to revenue share with recyclables that you've worked so hard over 20 years to develop. But we look at the numbers, and then we look at the amount of people in Aiken, and we think that there's a lot of material that's still in our waste stream that's going to the landfill. And we have a plan to continue to educate through our school system and also through a lot of the events in Aiken to get that recycle rate up. And we only win if in two years from now, we've doubled the recycle rate in the city of Aiken. So I appreciate your confidence.
Thank you. Thank you, Norman.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Did you say that this is a brand-new type of
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah. I've got a question on, when is all this going to take place, and are we going to be educating the citizens on exactly how to divide, what to divide, and when it's going to be in effect?
As far as the materials that they'll be accepting, it'll be the same materials that we have now. We'll be looking at different products that, eventually, working with Norman. We had to give North Augusta a notice, and so what do we We had to give North Augusta a notice and so, what are we starting, May or June?
Thirty days of, one of
Thirty days from today. So, that's why we wanted to get this on tonight's agenda, to give them that notice. But the consumer won't know any difference whatsoever. You know, they'll still put the stuff in the recycling bin or cart and then, the only thing that, over a period of time, is we hope to be able to offer more products that they'll be able to collect.
And this will reduce our expenses on
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, show hands please, paper. Pass this unanimously. Item four, approval of a resolution to accept deed of dedication of utilities in Summerhill area and Woodside Plantation. Mr. Liddick, please.
Yes, sir. We, we have had our engineering utilities department review their request that we have before tonight, and this is a resolution accepting the deed of dedication for the water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, infrastructure lines and the related equipment easements to access and maintain the utilities in Woodside Plantation, Phase Four, Section 14.
Okay. Do we have a motion and second for approval?
I say move.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Show of hands, please, approval. Pass this unanimously. Item five, approval of a bid award for repair of a sanitary sewer line using Capital Project Sales Tax three funds. Mr. Liddick.
Yes, sir. You've heard about the fact that we have several sanitary sewer lines that the hydrogen sulfide, which eats away at especially concrete pipe, needs to be replaced. And so, we have our first section that we are replacing. If you go down Sewer Bluff Road right now, the equipment is staging up there and we have 3,140 feet of pipe that's deteriorated. The low bid came from IPR Southeast LLC of Stone Mountain, Georgia, who submitted the lowest bid of $464,948.40. This money would come from the CPST III funds. We're not passing an ordinance, having to borrow the money, because we do have a, a positive fund balance in that budget currently and we expect about another $1.3 million sometime next month. So, this project, with your approval tonight, would probably start late May, sometime in June, and be completed sometime later this year. So, for council's approval tonight, this is a bid award to repair a sanitary sewer line running from the Woodside Sanitary Lift Station to Dem Lake's Sanitary Sewer Lift Station using CPST III funds.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and second for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this bid award to repair the sanitary sewer line using the Capital Project Sales Tax three funds.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion?
I have a second, Mr. Liddick.
Okay, I thought I heard.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if you want it, you can take it.
Any, any discussion?
Amazing, man.
Okay, if it's not, show of hands, please. Pass this unanimously. Item six, request to spend funds from Capital Project Sales Tax CPST III for sewer system infrastructure. Mr. Liddick.
Yes, sir. In January, I received a phone call from a individual who's moving into a piece of property off of Sandhurst Drive and there was an odor of, sewer odor back off his property. We looked into it and found out that a tree had fallen on a piece of pipe that was an aerial crossing. We have gone ahead and were able to make those emergency repairs, but in so doing, looked at several other sections of that pipe and found out that we needed to make some further extensive repairs and come up with more of a permanent solution for this pipe that got hit by a tree. We went to our engineering firm, well, several, and JLA came up with some proposals that we liked. The work will cost $58,000 due to soil testing, survey work, easement appraisals, acquisition, and structural design, and that's up to $58,000. That's the maximum. We would like to come before council tonight to ask us to proceed with this work to replace the pipe if necessary. We're also looking at the possibility of putting a liner within this pipe. So, we're looking at several different options for this area. There's not a lot of laterals or service entrances into the main line. So, for your consideration tonight, this is a request to spend from CPST III funds, up to $58,000, to hire JLA to come up with a permanent repair solution and to replace several more sections of pipe.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Pass this unanimously. Item seven, first reading of an ordinance amending Section 3-35 of the city code regarding schedule for city council elections. Mr. Liddick, please.
Yes, our city clerk went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago and found out that the state law had changed and that they now require 60 days prior to the general election that all the filings be completed, including any protest for filing or primary elections. Based on that, we're essentially going to have to move our dates that we had originally scheduled 30 days prior to that time. So, this ordinance that we have before each night will set those times. We've also given you a amended schedule for the 2015 election and this would then put us in compliance with all the state laws. So, this is an ordinance amending Section 235 of the Aiken City Code by revising the time for filing nomination petitions, holding primaries or conventions, entry of candidates for nomination in municipal party primaries or conventions, closing of entries, and election of members of city council, and making related amendments thereto.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval of this?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Flash second.
Any discussion?
Yes, uh, July, how, is this for one year or several years? Because July, the, the first Monday could be the Fourth of July.
Correct. This, the schedule that's set here is just for this election only.
So, every year?
Every time we have an election
Every two years, we, because in two years, the Fourth will be a Monday.
Right, and then we'll have a different election schedule
Yeah.
Based on those days.
Okay, so then it would go to the, it would, I guess, would it go to a Tuesday or do if you skip a Monday and go to the second, third, when that gets you your 60 days in trouble?
Now, just to comment. We need to make sure that 60 days be, and, and again, it all depends when the general elections. It could be held on the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, you know, there, that could be a change in date also.
Thank you.
I would just make a comment that, for those of us that actually walked the roads, walked the streets and so forth, it was bad enough when we signed up in August. It's going to be absolutely horrible to sign up in July. I noticed North Augusta has their elections in February and I'm not sure that there would be anything wrong with the city moving the election, but it's a tough time to campaign in the summer with this change. So, it's something that council might want to consider in the future.
General elections are held by, and, and just the different cities I've worked with, I could think of two that held them in September, another one that I'm working with, two of them are held in April, some hold it in March, some hold it in May. The date just needs to be set by council.
Yes.
The state would prefer that all elections be held in November, but that's not a requirement for city elections.
Well, it'd be, it'd be pretty good to move it earlier in the year.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously. Item eight, discussion of economic reinvestment funds.
If council has a mind, I'm going to go to the front here for this. Get out of my comfort zone and be able to look at you in the eye, so to speak.
Can you give your name and your
Yeah. I'm having a hard enough time just to turn this thing on. Over the last 10 months, I've had the opportunity of working with council on a number of projects and a variety of different subjects, and it's come up over and over and over again that we need to find ways to move the city forward, that there's opportunities that we have not availed ourselves of, and a lot of that is because of the funding. When we started the process last June, we were several hundreds of thousands of dollars short in our budget and we had to make up that difference by using reserve funds. We've been able to use some holding funds, reserve funds, and other things to help balance the budget, but it still did not provide the funding that council has asked for, for making good economic investment for our community, either looking at property that we may want to place sanitary sewer, stormwater, roads that would go in this project that would then allow businesses to come in within our community. If you go down Whiskey Road, probably half the properties from Pine Log Road south are not in the city of Aiken. And that's because there's not the infrastructure available. And if we could put some of that infrastructure in, not only would those properties come into the city, but you could have some great businesses, and that's just Whiskey Road. The same thing is on Pine Log Road, it's on Richland Avenue, it's on the bypass. And so, we have a lot of areas that we could go ahead and help businesses grow and become stronger in Aiken. We have also received a report through the chamber of how our growth in this area has been stagnant. The median income over the last 10 to 15 years has decreased tremendously in our area, mainly because SRS and the number of jobs that we've lost at that location. And South Carolina is the second fastest-growing state in the United States, but we're not receiving that growth here in our area. If you look at Columbia, if you look at Greenville, if you look at Spartanburg, several of the other cities that are large for us, they're having a tremendous renaissance in growth and development of things that are happening. Now, we could look at it and say, we like Aiken the way it is, we like the quiet nature. When I moved here 29 years ago, things haven't changed a whole lot and we don't want it to change. We, we love the historic properties, we want to continue with those historic properties, we want to keep the charm and the livability in our community, but on the other hand, how do we move this community forward? And so, in the 90s, we had a hospitality tax in the city of Aiken. We decided to discontinue it when we got the Capital Project Sales Tax. We started looking at how do we raise the necessary funding for the city of Aiken to be able to move forward, and we looked at a number of different things and we're going to talk about that in this, a little bit here if I get this working. Okay, Sarah? Do it, do it. Okay. I guess this thing's not going to work. Okay. As explained earlier, these are headlines from the Post and Courier and from Aiken Standard, number two in the nation as far as people wanting to move here, yet our growth in Aiken has not changed. The income is stagnant and again, that was demonstrated in previous columns in the standard. The growth rate, again, that's the chamber study that we've had. When we looked at other towns, the, we're 13th largest city in South Carolina. Every city larger than Aiken has a hospitality tax. Greenwood is one. They're reinvesting into their downtown area and other areas to make it stronger. Greenville, almost $8 million a year on 2%. I was up in Greenville this past weekend. It's amazing the number of things that are being done in that community. Now, we're not Greenville, we're not Greenwood, we're not Florence, we're not Sumter, we're not any of these cities large than us. We're unique unto ourselves and we have to find out what's going to work best for our area. But even small little towns like Johnsonville, and probably there's only a handful of people that know even where Johnsonville is at, is looking that this is something they see that could make a difference. These are some of the cities within South Carolina that are larger than us and the amount of money that they are receiving from the hospitality tax. Over 100 cities in South Carolina are currently receiving the hospitality tax and using that money for recreation, for economic development, and moving their community forward. So, what could we expect here in Aiken? We're proposing to raise a one cent on the dollar for prepared food only. That would raise about $1.2 million. If we'd looked at this in relationship to what would that mean if we raised our taxes up instead of having a hospitality, that means that every resident, every business inside the city of Aiken would have to have their mileage raised by 7.5 mils. That's over 10% higher than what we have it now. And again, it's affected by 100% of the residents. Yet, conversely, if you look at the hospitality tax, we feel that over 60% of it would be paid for individuals that live outside the city limits. And I went up to Greenville this weekend, I paid a lot of money on that 2% on food and beverages. But this way, it affects 1.2 million on the tax increase, only $480,000 if we looked at the hospitality tax. We're looking at how do we make this into a proactive or pro-development for businesses? And what we have come up with in the budget is we've looked at a number of investment projects that we could use this money for. Now, according to state law, the hospitality money could only be used for tourist-related cultural centers, historical buildings, recreational sites, beautification within your community. So, what we have done is we've taken $1.2 million of projects that we're currently working with and using that with hospitality, which then freed up $1.2 million that we could then use for economic development within the city of Aiken. These are approximately the numbers that we have. We're proposing that $600,000 would be used for business-related investment. Most of this would be looking at a downtown garage. For decades, since, since I came to Aiken in the 80s, all I've ever heard from merchants is we don't have enough parking downtown. And they're correct. Many times during the day, but especially in the evenings and weekends now, it's very, very difficult to find a parking space. We recently received a letter from St. John's Church stating that their church and other churches in the area are having a very difficult time. When they have an 8:30 in the morning service and then people are arriving for the next service and for Sunday School and it doubles up in that parking, they have no place to go. I heard on Easter Sunday, they had a block, parked several blocks from that location. We're proposing a public garage. In the past, we've had a difficult time saying, "How do you build this public garage and where do you get the income to help support that public garage in the future?" Because it costs money to maintain that garage. There's elevators that are related with it, there's electricity for the lights, there's ventilation, there's repairs in that garage, it's keeping that garage clean. And we have looked at it several times. We looked at the region's bank area, we looked at other areas that were not in the downtown area. We believe we have an opportunity at this point to locate this garage right up the alley where the, what I call the motel section of the hotel would sit. In turn, guests that are using the garage would be paying approximately $5 a night in a fee to help maintain that garage, which would bring us in probably around $90,000 a year in maintenance fee and upkeep for the garage. So, we have an opportunity for funding source and that, in turn, this public garage can be used to provide some space for individuals that would be in the hotel that they're looking to renovate in the very near future. We have some other areas within our community. On Whiskey Road, I won't mention the particular properties, but there's a couple of different properties that several businesses have looked at in the past, but because of some stormwater problems, some water problems, some sewer problems, some infrastructure needs have backed away from it. Right now, it looks like we have a couple of proposals that would be ready to go forward. One of them called me last week and said, "Let me know how council feels about this so that we could enter into an engineering or developers agreement on providing sewer to this property and several other ones that are currently in the county and a reinvestment could take place." The second area is a, what we call the business license rebate and we have $160,000. That rebate would be given to all That rebate would be given to all restaurants where 50% or more of their gross income came from prepared food. They would pay the fee, and then one year later, once we determine how much they provided in revenue, we would rebate half their business license. Half that business license would amount to, for restaurants, about $50,000 in rebates a year, which is quite substantial to help out those restaurants and other areas. The rest of the money would be used to help businesses that are getting started. It's very difficult that first to second year for new businesses, when they're having to pay business license fees, they're having to pay taxes, and they're very vulnerable, especially during that first year. So what we're proposing is that first year for new business locating inside the city limits, we would rebate 100%. 67% the second year, 33% the third year. And hopefully by that second and third year, their business is growing, and we'd be getting more money in, and the business license is going up, and their rebates become actually larger. When we looked at it for the past three years, businesses that came to the city in '12, '13 versus '11 and '12, we'd actually be rebating more money on the third year than we would on the second year. Because again, they're growing. So again, we would want to have a component that we would have a rebate or reinvestment through their business license. The third area, we'll call it the business vitality division here. This area is where we would hire an individual that every morning when they woke up, all they would be thinking about is, how do we bring more businesses in? How do we help the current businesses that are here in Aiken become more attractive, to create and have more businesses within their community? Part of that would be looking at doing assessments. Why is our money going to Augusta? Why is our money going to Columbia? What products can we bring into our community so that money is not leaving our city? The individual would also help with grant writing, be doing some PR. They would be attending some, there's a group called the ICSC International Conference of Shopping Centers. Conference of Shopping Centers. So it's, just about any brand name is located at these shows. Attending things like that, going to some of these home shows to bring more people into Aiken. So the individual, again, their main job would be, how do we create more business? How do we go ahead and help the businesses that are here? They'll be working hand in hand with the Chamber. We even thought, should they be at the Chamber, should they be at the city? Where should they be? But they'll be working very closely with the Chamber, because a lot of businesses, that's the door they come into first. They'd be working with our planning department, they'd be working with our inspections department, helping to walk through businesses that would be coming here for the first time. Working with developers, sitting at the table, making sure that the development and the business went forward in a timely manner. And the last area is the, what we call enterprise capital reserves. It's money that's set aside, and in future years, we'll probably not have as much money set aside, because more money would be in the business-related investment. Council would be identifying projects that they feel are needed to help businesses. That's where we were talking about the stormwater, the sewers, the roads, that's part of it. It's also going to help with collaboration with the county. How can we work with the county on bringing more businesses? What if a business came to us that was what we call incubator, a brand-new business, a venture capital? And council felt like that was really going to be good for the city, it's going to bring in more jobs, and they need some help. Maybe it's, we allow some people to come in this building here and rent, or they go across the street and rent some property. And it's, how do we go ahead and help that business in the first couple of years, either through grants or loans? And that's that new venture fund. We've had some opportunity in the very recent past where Will Williams with the EDP has come before the city and said, if you could give us some money towards this project, we believe we could, they would be a good fit. But it would require some infrastructure improvements for industrial, and that could be used for it. There are just a number of things that council could do that would allow us to move forward on these capital reserves. Each one of these would be approved by council ahead of time, just like you approved tonight, more engineering to do work at the Burn Building. And before they were approved to go forward, you voted it. The same thing, anytime that we would be using the capital reserve funds or this pool of money, it would go before council for your approval first, unless it was already a budget item. Recently, we had a business in town that created some apartments on the second floor, and they asked, is, there are some historic credits, property tax credits that are available? There are. But again, where does that money come from? This is an area where the money could come from, on property tax relief on new projects. I remember when Woodside, the reserves was built, and before they came, they were looking at, should they stay in the city, or should they be in the county? At that time, council set up and said, we will give you some tax relief for five years on the vacant property and three years on the clubhouse. Again, that money could come out of the capital reserve funds. These are some of the projects that are being worked on through capital investment throughout the state. Somerville just came up, the great $30 million economic development project for a conference center, hotel condos in the downtown area, and they have been helping with the parking garage and other things. Darlington, same thing. Spartanburg just had a major announcement recently, and they were using economic development funds, again, coming from hospitality. Anderson just built a public parking garage downtown through their hospitality and doing streetscape work. Rock Hill, Hartsfield, and we could go on and on with the number of projects. So, where do we stand with all of this? If council moves ahead with the approval of the hospitality tax or the reinvestment, as we like to look at it, that money would free up some general fund money that will be transferred to an economic development fund or budget. You have within your package tonight, how that money would be split amongst the various projects, funding again for this business advocate, funding for some legal, some architectural and engineering, other professional, various things to support that individual. We have $50,000 in here for storm drainage, $50,000 in for sewer, $160,000 for business license relief, $20,000 for retail assistance. Retail assistance, many of you heard a presentation recently for retail strategies. It could be that firm, it could be other firms, that would mine the data from credit cards and give us a bunch of information that could then be used by the Chamber, by existing businesses, for new businesses, to bring more business to Aiken. So there's $20,000 in there, another $10,000 for business recruitment are going out to these various shows, and then the $285,000 in this capital reserve pool for council to use. So, we're here to certainly answer any questions that council may have. We wanted tonight, we originally stated that we were going to have first reading. After talking to a few council members, hearing from some citizens, there were some questions as to, how do we know the money's going to be going for economic development? What is it going to be used for in economic development? You are, just like myself, as a taxpayer, Project Jackson in North Augusta was funded with a specific goal in mind, to take the riverfront and redevelop it. We in turn want to be able to do the same thing. We want to specifically take this money to reinvest that $1.2 million in the downtown other areas of the city, and to bring that capital that is needed to move the city forward. So, we would be proposing at the next meeting to have first reading of an ordinance to establish the hospitality tax at one cent per $1, or 1%. Within there, we would have a few whereas's. This money would be used for economic development, and outline how it would be used, so you know absolutely, you could tell your constituents and others within the community, this is how the money would be used. It'd be used for the public parking garage, would be used for infrastructure investment, would be used for business license reinvestment or the rebate to them, it'd be used for the recruitment of new businesses. And we'd have funding set aside that council then, during this next year, as we're establishing this, set aside that as new opportunities came before you, you would be able to look at that and decide, could we help this business? Could we help with some property tax relief with a business or with a historic property?
Roger, this is excellent. The presentation is excellent, the information in it is just right on, right on top there. And if anyone has a problem with this, you know, it's hard to understand why. But we've got to go ahead with this, there's no doubt about it, in my view. As this says, we've held it off for a while because we didn't want to raise taxes, you know? We wanted to go as long as we could, but certainly we're there now. And we've got to move forward, and this would certainly help us to move forward as the city.
And let me just make one brief comment. I've mentioned Woodside. When they came here 10 years ago, 15 years ago?
At Woodside.
At which time, on the reserve property, there was probably 200 people within this room that were, the vast, vast majority, did not want to see that move forward. So the Woodside, the village of Woodside and the reserve area could very easily have been turned down by council. And it was a split vote on council's part. Back in the 60s, council had a very tough decision to make, when some properties were going to be given to the city, 25 acres, some historic property, and there's a petition of over 300 citizens stating, we don't believe you should move forward, we don't think you have the ability to take care of this property and do it justice. And on a 4-3 vote, council went ahead and approved it anyways, and that's Ry Patch and Hope and Gardens today. In 95, 1995, SRS had made an announcement, or the federal government, that we reduced in the number of employees at SRS from 25,000 down to 15,000. Our timing was probably not the best, but within a week of that, we were making the announcement that we wanted to go forward to build a large recreational facility called Citizens Park. And again, on a 4-3 vote, council went ahead and approved the building of Citizens Park. It was a tough decision, just like the Hope and and Ry Patch. Same thing happened up at the airport just recently, and looking at the terminal that's there, and the runway improvements, and the ILS, and the traffic that came in with the Masters this week. Again, it was a split vote on going ahead and approving the expansion of the airport. Tough decisions. And this is tough too, because no one ever wants to, believe me, all the years I was city manager, that was the gut-wrenching thing, of going before council and saying, we need to raise a tax, we need to raise a fee. And this, again, is one of those situations. But I believe in my heart of hearts that this is the right thing to do, to move our community forward. And as the mayor said, it's been a long time coming, we haven't raised taxes, probably should have raised taxes, but it's been 25 years. Again, this is a way that we could do this, and it's going to be paid for then by citizens not inside the city. When the law says that the money has to be used for tourism-related, cultural, historical, and recreational-type property, beautification, they define a tourist as anybody who lives outside the city of Aiken. So we know that about 45% of those that use our facility for recreation and other things would be, according to state law, called tourists, even though they're within our community. We also know that about 20% of the people that stay through accommodations, eat at our restaurants, are certainly outside of our area. And when I say outside of our area, I'm talking about outside of our community, in other counties and other states. So again, we're paying it right now every time that we leave the city. North Augusta, Augusta, any of the larger communities, the other 100 cities. So I believe that this is the time to do it, and it's time to move forward with these projects.
Other comments?
Yeah, please. You started by saying we needed this amount of money to move forward for the city to grow, and I would agree with that. We could just easily do that by adjusting our budget. I've tried for seven years I've been on council to get zero-based budgeting with, I can't say total failure, because we do have a $100,000 reduction in public safety this year. When the economy tanked, this council did nothing, except continue to spend the same amount of money every year, year after year after year. And now we're in a situation where we think the only solution to a problem that needs addressing, I'm not going to doubt that, is to raise taxes. I've had people call me and say, that prefer that we raise the accommodations tax committee, accommodations tax, which is currently at 5%. I've had some people, and I can't be the only one at council, who have said, on top of the 1% that the school board just started, I mean, this is a bit much. We've already gone through in our new budget, we're increasing taxes and fees all over the place. I don't think there's any department that has not been affected, from public services, public safety, the cost of reports and so forth, engineering utilities. I mean, everyone in the city is being asked to pay more, but the city has not shown an inclination to want to really look hard at reducing expenses. I hope I didn't hear, Roger, the statement that the new projects on Whiskey Road are in danger if this does not get passed. I thought you had assured me that that was not the case.
The one project would probably not move forward unless we provide some relief with the sanitary sewer. And the other project, we're looking at some other alternatives, but it still does not solve the overall storm drainage problem at that location.
No, but would solve it enough for those businesses to go in?
Possibly, yes. Not the one with the sanitary sewer. I mean, they need sanitary sewer for the restaurant to go into that location.
Okay. I asked a question last week, I thought I got a, I thought I got a different answer.
The other location, by moving the building forward, it reduced the amount of stormwater going to the rear. Instead of about 90% going towards the rear, only about, less than 50% will go there. So it's reduced it, but I don't think it's going to relieve the whole problem that we have back there. They've had flooding back there for years, and this will help alleviate it. We're looking at another solution, possibly going to an adjoining property at Storm Sewer that, instead of $150,000 solution that we were given by the engineer, we think we could do it for $50,000.
Okay. The other issue that I have is that essentially, we seem to be playing some budget tricks, if you would. The hospitality tax money by law is supposed to be used for tourism projects. And what we're saying is, we're going to take that hospitality tax money, and we're going to, as I understood what you said, we're going to use it for, we're not going to use it all for tourism. We're going to put some of that money into the general fund and take the general fund money out and use it for these economic projects. Because the tourism money can't be used for the economic projects, economic development projects. It must be used for tourism and the six items that are listed in the law for which it can be used. So saying that we're going to levy a 1% hospitality tax, and we're going to be able to spend on a business-related and so forth, we can only do that by playing quote-unquote "games" with the finances. Because we wouldn't be doing what the law indicates we should be doing with the hospitality tax.
I'm very disturbed with the idea of it being a trick or a game. It's neither of those things.
Well, are we, well, let me just-
It's simply, money will be going into the general fund via the hospitality tax, and it will pay for every legal thing that it's allowed to pay for. The money that was being spent in the general fund will now still be there, and it will be spent on the economic development. But there's no trick or game involved.
Well, I would disagree, I wouldn't have said it just casually.
You'd be wrong.
The money, the law says, the revenue must be used for tourism.
And it will, absolutely.
So $2.1 million that we collect in hospitality tax-
1.2.
1.2 is not going to be used for tourism. We just heard that $600,000 for business-related investment and so forth. And we're going to take general fund money to do what the hospitality tax money is supposed to do.
The full 1.2 million will be used for tourism-related items.
We will commit to spending that on tourism-related items, yes. I understand that.
It has to, by law?
Yes.
That- That in turn, though, relieved funds that were then could be used available for other things. My understanding is council wanted to use those funds, though, for economic development. So we put it into a standalone economic development budget. But we have a budget, just like we have with accommodation tax money, where we receive about $550,000. That has to show an expenditure of $550,000. So you get $550,000 revenue in, $550,000 are going to be spent on certain items or line items. Same thing here. $1.2 million will be coming in. $1.2 million has to be spent on hospitality or recreational tourism, cultural, historic, landscaping improvements that are identified in the law. Of that, 1.2, $500,000 for a parking garage, which is allowed under the law.
I don't question it. The parking garage would certainly be allowed. I think it would be allowed under the law. I just wanted to pass those comments on. Obviously, I think there's strong support in the council to pass this tax, but I would just reiterate that we've done a disservice to our constituents by not looking harder at coming up with a 5% reduction in our budget that would give us the money that we want to do for, that we would have to be able to do these things. So that's all I have just to add.
Mr. LeDuke, how many parking spaces would be available? I know some will be used for the hotel guests. How many would be available?
We intend to have plus or minus 100 spaces. A lot of that's going to be based on the configuration of the property. Would we be able to do it all on the existing property that that motel sits on? Do we have to acquire additional property? So until we get the design parameters, we know that it would be a building that would be probably three stories tall with park, three to four stories with parking on the second and third floor. And then you have your top floor or the rooftop also having parking. We would designate a certain number of spaces that during certain hours of the day would be reserved for the hotel. So let's say there's 100 spaces, 50 spaces between, and I'll just use some numbers, between 5:00 and 8:00 or 9:00 the next morning would be reserved for the hotel. But then during the day, when the merchants and patrons of the businesses downtown need parking spaces, those would be available.
And with that $9,000 that will be generated by hotel guests, the $5 for each guest, would it be, do you think that would be enough to maintain parking?
If I said 9,000, I meant 90,000. So $90,000 would then, if you looked at the, I think I used a 60% occupancy rate times $5 a night, times 365 days, and that came up around 90,000. And that would then provide a pool of money that as you needed to make repairs, the building in the future, especially on the front of the building, you'd want this to look like a regular building with probably glass windows and things, if those got broken out or anything else, you could go ahead and repair it. You could also provide the maintenance that's going to be necessary in that building.
Okay. I have some budget questions in relation to this. I don't think anybody disagrees we need to raise some sort of tax. The current year, we have $580,000 out of the reserve fund. We had $477,000 from the FEMA money and another $112,000. So in this year's budget, which ends June 30th of 2015, there's about $1.2 million of, if you will, one-time money in there. And how are we accounting for that next year? Do we have reserve funds planned to be put in the 2015, 16 budget? Because there's a million two going to not be available. Or there's something we're not going to do somewhere.
Well, as Mr. Dwar mentioned, we've had some reductions in staff. Not only was it in public safety, but in the planning department, we had some reductions. We, in the past, and I wish I had that data with me, Mr. Evner, but in the past, I know that we have used on average about $1.4 to $1.5 million from our equipment reserve account. This next year, it's right around 900,000. In the past several years, we've used about $700,000 to $800,000 from our holding funds. This year, it's going to be at around $300,000. So those funds, although going to be used, will be used about half about as much as in the past. We've been able to look at the revenue, look at the expenditures. And part of what happened this past year is the fact that staff will tell you a number of positions were frozen. A number of positions that they had wanted to have in the current year's budget were not filled. And so we did not add any new positions this current year. In fact, we have reduced them. And in next year's budget, there's even a few other reductions. So we have made the attempt, to answer your question, to reduce the manpower and some of the other areas to make up that difference. But we currently have a balanced budget without the FEMA money, without having to take from the reserves other than what we have accounted for within the current budget. Part of that is because we went ahead and took solid waste and we made that into an enterprise fund. So we've taken all the solid waste out of the general fund budget and it's a standalone budget now with that $17 supporting that service to the citizens.
Okay. And I understand all you said. But we're still taking money out of the reserve fund for this coming year.
And you'll always take some money out of the reserve fund.
But if we don't have that many always left, I mean, it's down to about 3 mil. And we've taken 580 this year and 3 next year and so forth.
Over the last 10 years, our fund balance at the end of the year has been at $505,000 positive. Now, some years, it's higher than other years, but it's, we've averaged $505,000 when we look at it last year. So this year, that's why I try to keep it at around $300,000, figuring that if we get $500,000 more in, we'll still have a cushion and not have to take all that money. But we have always used some amount of reserves. My practice in the past is try to keep that somewhere around $300,000 to $400,000 in the budget.
Per year?
Per year.
But prior to 2008, we didn't take any out of that when the economy was booming.
No, we always took some out of it.
But how did, where do we put the money back in if we always take some out?
Well, at the end of the year, assuming we have revenue left over, more revenue than expenditures, which again, we had that $505,000 per, on average, over the last 10 years, we put that back into our holding fund accounts. We'd come back to council and say, we have X number of dollars left over at the end of the year. Here's how we believe they should be allocated in our holding funds. And that was usually in August, September, and the council would approve it and say, go ahead in those funds.
The numbers that, by the year, though, that reserve fund has still gone downhill in the last few years.
It's gone in the last few years by a few hundreds of thousands of dollars, yes.
All right. And then in the future, how do we, how do we make it neutral every year? Because we, you know, we could have a little turn down in the economy and obviously other things will go down. Somewhere or another, we all, we've got to get positive every year going back in rather than betting on the come. We need to have some plans to do that.
And during the good years, it's like the Egyptians, during the seven years of good and plenty, they filled up the grain storage and then during the tough times, they took the grain out. We have been building that fund up. And when the recession hit in 2008, '09, we didn't put as much money into it. It had, if I recall correctly, somewhere plus or minus $3 million in the holding fund that was not designated. And then we have about $11 million in the designated holding funds, which is for the vehicles, equipment, computers, and buildings.
That's all I appreciate. I'm more interested in the cash reserve fund that we take out and we put the one line item in, one line item in, like the $580,000 this year and 300 next year. Depreciation kind of sits over here by itself.
And that was at around 3 million. We're, I don't know, I haven't looked recently, but 2 point some million now.
Okay. And when I see the, and I guess my concern is at some point, we need to get that positive every year and not bet on the come. Our seven years are beginning to run out on whatever cycle you want to use.
Hopefully, we had the seven bad years. We're now going to have the seven good years.
We're beyond the seven now, so I don't know if the drought is going to cause any more bad years. On here, you show that you're going to transfer $700,000 into the general fund.
No, 700 from the general fund into the economic development fund.
Because you're putting 700,000 of the.
Hospitality tax to reduce various line items in primarily buildings and grounds. That's the parkways, that's Hope and Gardens, that's the flowers you see, irrigation that we have on the parkways, and then PRT items, park, recreation and tourism items. That made up is the reduction of the 700,000.
All right. And so that helps us out $700,000 in the budget.
And then in return, I took 700, that 700,000 and transferred it to the economic development budget.
So basically, it's a net zero to our budget.
That is correct.
So when we balance our budgets, the, actually, the hospitality tax technically doesn't help balance the budget, is what you just said. You put 700 in, you take 700 out.
I mean, and it could, if council wanted to do that in the future, but in this particular budget, it does not whatsoever. It's neutral.
But you're right about the problem and the problem you've outlined really speaks to the need for this. You know, in an ideal world, which Aiken has almost enjoyed for a couple of decades, growth itself will pay for increasing costs of providing the services of government. And that's what enabled us not to have to raise taxes for 25 years. We're now in a period of zero growth. That's, and that is as much as anything else, is the reason that we now find ourselves with the budget problem that you described. This then is an investment in trying to invigorate that growth. It's planning for the future. It's trying to ward off, if you will, those future problems or at least make them where they're not as bad. If it's successful, it will ultimately take care of the growth piece, which will take care of those budgetary items. You know, there's a lot of other things looming that Rutter talked to us about in our work session, as far as the legacy costs of all these things that we're building with the capital project sales tax money and everything else. There's a lot of other things looming that are going to be challenges to our budget, so we've got more work to do. But a lot of what you're asking about is, and that Dick had mentioned, is stuff that needs to be dealt with when we're dealing with the budget itself. This is separate from that.
I think, I think you're saying the right words. This is, and I think the public needs to understand, this is dealing with a separate issue than balancing the budget. Because inflation is marching on and we know that. We see some things around that we used to fix sooner than we do now.
If it's successful, it can help balance the budget through that growth.
Let me just add that this is a new penny we're talking about coming in. There are some communities that are threatened by growth. And I don't personally feel threatened by what has been presented by Roger to us with this hospitality tax. If you look at the number of cities, and it showed you this on the screen for those that are in the audience, many of us travel through these cities several times during the year. We're buying something in those cities. And we're paying the one cent, the two cent, and not even thinking anything about it. But when it comes to an economic contribution to our town, we're reluctant to invest in it. And that's what we're doing. We're investing for the future. This one cent, there are things that we're trying to achieve here will help us to implement that at a much rapid pace than where we are right now. And I, I'll go on record and say I support this.
Okay. Well, we've still got to balance the budget.
I know.
And, you know, next year, in next year's budget, we're going to pick up anywhere from $300,000 to $600,000 of additional capital project sales tax, investment that we have to fund to operate.
Absolutely.
And I just want to be sure that.
I think Dick's point's still a good one. I didn't disagree with that part of his point about taking the long, hard look at the budget and those things. Because we will have to do that again next year.
And I guess that's what we got to be sure. You know, we got to do something, no question about that. But I think we still got to be careful. This will take several years to implement. Maybe the next seven-year plague won't hit us and we can go ahead and seven years from now, this takes off. But we've still got to deal with the intermediate years. And the intermediate years are real. This is not going to bring in $1 million next year's budget here. And we know that. It's a slow-term investment.
It is.
So I still think we, when we get into this budget session coming up in June of this year, we really need to look at the budget itself. Because this is a net zero to helping the budget for the next couple of years. And I think we shouldn't forget that.
But again, these are new items that we're talking about, that we're bringing online, that we want these funds to support.
We also have a new item that is coming on board, if we believe the Clemson folks, of about a half a million dollars to take care of the recreation projects that are being built on the north side. Let me talk a minute about growth, because I think that, I think the city's been taking some unnecessary hits on the word growth. The USCA study referred to population growth. And it referred to the percentage of 0.61% of average annual growth, 2010 to 2012. It's approaching zero because for the previous decade, it was 1.54%. And it's the worst between the U.S., South Carolina, Aiken County, and North Augusta. But from between 2000 and 2010, we were better by everybody except North Augusta. We're talking about between 2010 and 2012, 360 people lost in the city of Aiken. That's, that's a pittance, quite frankly. And when you look at what's happened in the city, we've added Cracker Barrel, we've added, we're building Panera, Atlanta Bread Factory, several hotels and motels. We haven't added any industrial businesses. We tried and weren't successful with only one. And hopefully, if this passes, maybe, maybe we can try for more than one. But there's a lot of businesses that don't want to come in because of our business license taxes. As a matter of fact, we're, we've lost a lot of businesses that have moved out. But we still have retail businesses that love Aiken, that want to come to Aiken, and they come where the money is. We heard that in a chamber presentation last week. So it's, all is not gloom and doom for the city. I still don't know the numbers, but what I think I heard you say, Roger, is we haven't balanced our budget in years. We've had to take money out of the reserve fund. And then what I don't understand is I know we've voted in August of every year, most of that money, some of it, we use for employee compensation. Some of it, we had to use one year for the Pawnee Nielsen issue. I, I'm just not sure that I remember, and I have more senior moments as I get older. I'm not sure I remember approving, putting money into the reserve fund or the holding fund in that August memo that we get. And all I'm saying is that we could have the money that we needed to do these things if we had the courage to really take a good, hard look at the budget. It's hard to believe that, given the economy, that we need, and we have probably more people now than we had in 2008, businesses have had to cut. I don't know where other counties, what the county has done. We have approved every request you've given us for hiring. I don't think we've recalled, we've disapproved any of them every time. And we've got one as the next item that we're going to approve it. So we have approved all of the requests. The only reason we put that in was to get a handle on it. Because we felt that we lost control of it. And in fact, in fact, we did. There was a lot of, lot of movement. And the human resource, the monthly report that we look at, turnover in the city has been way too high. And that's something that we need to work on. But Aiken is, I won't say it's in great shape, but I'll say it's in good shape in the case of retail. In some cases in the retail, I think there's some businesses that are going to leave us here pretty soon, from what I understand. But I just wanted to discuss that growth thing. That reflects more on population. And the items in that report that relate to concern, when you talk about the average per capita income going down, that, in my opinion, is related primarily to the site.
Yeah, it is, but it still went down. I mean, it's not blaming anybody in Aiken for doing anything wrong, but the average per capita income went from $58,000 to $46,000 from 1989 to 2013.
Yes.
When, in the same period of time, most other places that didn't suffer, that weren't dependent on Savannah Versite and didn't suffer that kind of job loss, saw per capita income actually go up. Ours went down 25%. Most other places went. Most other places went up 2.5% per year. That difference, as I explained to y'all in that work session, if Savannah Versite hadn't happened, that would be, in terms of gross domestic product in the city of Aiken, that would make a $300 million a year difference in the gross domestic product in the city of Aiken. That alone, I mean, that's a gargantuan number. Now, city council didn't do anything wrong for us to be in this situation, but we are in this situation. And, you know, the, the growth rate of 1.5% per year for a decade is below what any industry experts would tell you is, is the sustainable rate that you'd want to have anyway.
It's not ideal, but since then, we've added 1,000 lots from, from Woodside. There is, there is still building, and all during this period, our business license revenue increased. Not significantly, but it increased. We, you know, from 2000, in 2008, it was 2.2 million. In, in 2014, 2.3 million. So, I mean, it's increased. It's, so when you talk about...
I think we changed some classifications and some rates.
Well, when you, when you, just be careful when you say bad things about Aiken, because I, I'm not accusing anybody of saying that, but I'm just saying, we're not a zero anything city. We lost 360 people between 2010 and 2012, out of 30,000. And most of the data, if people would look at this consolidated annual financial report, you'll see what's happened financially in Aiken in the last 10 years. And it's, it's more good than not.
Well, that covers, provides the government picture, not the private sector picture as much.
Well, business license...
I think y'all both made good, I think y'all made good points about the need to really scrub the budget. I agree with you there.
Let me just mention one thing about the budget before it leaves my head, because I could have a senior moment too, very quickly. About 20% of the budget is wrapped up in three items: health insurance, pension, and regular insurance, your liability, workers' compensation type insurance. The one area with the liability insurance, we're in the process of having a risk manager look at those areas, the workers' comp and the liability. The other two areas, the pension and the health insurance, I've been on the phone with our new city manager, that'll be here at the next meeting, and John Clem and I have been talking about, those are the two areas that he's going to be really doing a lot of concentration on, is the pension and the health insurance. We're already working on a plan to make some fairly radical changes to it that will be rolling out in May with the employees, and then they'll have a month to, but once he gets there, that's going to be the two areas I'm going to be sitting down with him to help with the budget. It's not going to help us with this year's budget, but it certainly could help us with future year's budgets.
And I think we saw recently how many of our people are in $100 deductible medical plans. Not a lot of people in this room are in that shape.
Okay, good discussion. Let's move on to item number one there, requests.
This will be on the next agenda.
That'll be on the next agenda for first week.
Request for approval of Don Free's employee positions, Mr. LeDuke.
Just about every meeting, I'd probably say 95% of them, we have some employees' positions to fill. These are not, again, new positions, these are ones where people have resigned, got terminated, or retired. So, you have three tonight in the solid waste division. We've been using temporaries in this position for a while, and we're ready to go ahead and fill three vehicle operator positions for solid waste.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have a motion second?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay. Show of hands, please. Passage unanimously. Okay. Issues, information?
We've got...
Do you have any?
I do.
Okay.
On the bicycles, I'd ask Mr. LeDuke to put the information in here on bicycles, whatever you want to call it, the bicycle lanes or whatever. All through this discussion for the last couple of years, nothing has ever mentioned about parking, or traffic flow, or anything for the cars. Okay? We're going to replace all the cars with bicycles and do better downtown. All right. The other thing, so that's one thing that bothers me, that that never came up in these last couple of years until some citizens brought it up and says, hey, you can't park in front of my house. And then we had some businesses that we eliminated the street parking on. So, and that documentation is here, and basically, I guess there's a subcommittee in the city or we're using the county information, but it specifically states that city council has approved all of this. And so, I guess, on a path forward, shouldn't some of these information or things we're doing, bicycle lanes and shared lanes, shouldn't that be going through planning commission or BZA or something? We send every other entity through that for change or something on their land or take a tree out, yet we go and, if you will, eliminate some parking places or add lanes, and it comes from, either from the county group, which we have members on the county group, but it's not coming through one of our city commissions. And I guess I'm a little concerned, why isn't either planning or BZA or somebody looking at this? Because this is making a permanent change for the city. And right, right now, excuse me, it just comes through evidently a subcommittee of the county. At least, that's my impression of it. And I think it ought to have some more, if you will, flushing out before it gets to council.
Saying that the county's doing things that the city doesn't know they're doing in the city?
I'm just saying, everything is based off of what came down from the federal, the state, and the county, and then we've embraced that one way or another. And I just think it ought to, either planning commission or BZA ought to be looking at this from their perspective before we go and add a bicycle lanes or something in front of businesses, or whatever we're going to put them. I think we're changing our streets, so we ought to be looking at that other than just coming to council for the first time.
You know, I don't disagree with that at all, but I'm trying to understand how these things get changed. You introduced the county into it.
Well, is there, is there...
The city's...
What are the, what part of the city do these go through? What commission, do these changes we've made to the bicycle lanes and shared lanes, what commission in the city has these gone through before they got to...
I don't know what they've gone through, if anybody does, but maybe we need another com...
No, we don't need another. We got plenty, but we have, you know, we make our citizens do a lot of things.
Well, I had this conversation with Roger, what was it, Roger, two weeks ago? Or we could go, two weeks ago? And I know we don't need another committee, but certainly, just as we established a question committee for special projects, special concerns, certainly when you look at what we're discussing with all kinds, all modes of transportation, especially bicycle, we need someone, some committee that's an arm of the city to connect with the county and to keep us apprised of what's going on.
Well, but we are doing that, and we get this information that comes in from, if you will, the county, and I call it the county committee, and we're part of that, and it's got a decision logic, and I look at that great logic, but yet, the only thing it says is there's one public comment here. And, all right, if nobody in the public comes and complains, it just goes on through the system. You know, planning hasn't looked at it, the BZA, or public safety, or some of those, we should be going through our current commissions to make these kind of changes in the city.
What's...
Give me one example of what you're talking about.
Well, look at Hain. We went and we put in the bicycle lane...
Okay.
And we eliminated parking places, and nobody ever mentioned that in the meetings, and even when I asked about it, two meetings or three meetings later, after three hours of listening to it, nobody ever wants to talk about parking places. And we gave up parking places. And I can, I can guarantee you, if they would have said at the first meeting back in November 12, that we're eliminating parking places in front of one of the major businesses on Hain, I don't think that would have passed. We would have questioned that. And I had no idea when I voted for it, that we were voting to eliminate parking places in front of houses and businesses.
I, it was a, I thought we voted on a shared...
He's talking about the original vote. He's talking about...
The original vote was on a resolution. We weren't provided copies of the plan.
I thought you were talking about the last one.
No, and it, it was wide open, and then the November, I mean, the June 18th, the June 18th letter said that council approved bicycle lanes. And this is my concern, that this is marching down the road, and we're not really looking to the plan. If you look at the next 10 streets that get done, they're the major right-of-ways through the city. And the state's going to say yes. They're not going to say no if the county, if the state goes. I think we need to have our internal commissions that are already there looking at these and saying, this is the right thing to do for the future of the city.
And your question, Reggie, is that we have, we do not have a commission that's an arm of the city to review this process jointly with the county.
He's just talking about having the planning commission...
Me, if the planning commission, I mean...
City council.
We use the planning commission for doing development in the city, or if, or we use the BZA if somebody wants to change something in a business, but yet, we as council voted to eliminate...
I think it's a good idea to have it go...
Parking places.
I think it's reasonable to have it go first, to the planning commission, before it comes to the city council.
How do we...
So, it can be fully vetted.
How do we do, for the next meeting, do I need to have that on the agenda as a vote that, any of these, these items? Because right now, if you read what we got, we're going down the road to do Hampton Avenue next.
Very soon.
Well, it's an excellent point you raised, Reggie.
Yeah, is that okay?
I think the planning commission too.
We're okay with doing Hampton Avenue with by lanes or shared lane, all the way down Hampton. Are we okay with that?
Let me kind of bring council up to date. About two months ago, you had two projects that came before you. One was a request by the city to put sidewalks in Crowsden Park. It's about $101,000 using a TAP grant, Transportation Alternative Program. At the same time, you approved $101,000, and you split it and said, let's go half with the bikes, half with the sidewalks. So, we have, we're in the process right now of finalizing that grant request, and there's $101,000 that'll be spent in the next 12 to 18 months on some sort of bicycle improvements. And number one is Hampton Avenue, and then number two, I think, is Richland and Park Avenue. And so, right now, staff would be working with the state and arts on bringing these projects, number one, getting the engineering done to be able to come back to, whether it be council or the planning commission, to say, let's take Hampton Avenue, the lane width is 24 feet wide, if we want to put four-foot lane striping on it, here's how we'd get two lanes or one lane on Hampton Avenue. In the past, transportation projects have gone through council. If you would like, and this, I look at this as a transportation project. If you'd like to have a transportation project like this, I think the correct avenue to go with is through the planning commission. You know, so the planning commission could go ahead and look at it, they could review it, see if, how that would affect the neighborhoods, bring the recommendation to the planning commission, and then it comes back to council. But it's, it's very critical, because right now, that grant is proceeding, and it's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Well...
Those projects are going to be coming back to you.
But right now, that project doesn't have to come back to us. The grant's been approved, they're going down the road to do it, and the next thing...
The plans always need to come back to you for final approval.
Well, they haven't in the past, I'll put it that way.
I realize that.
And also, what you just said is, planning commission isn't leading this charge to get that done. They, what you just said, this will go from this committee or subcommittee, whatever it is, the group planning this, it's writing the grant, that's going to go to planning commission and then come to us?
No, you've already approved the grant. You, you voted and says, let's go forward with arts.
The arts commission.
And arts in February approved it.
Yes.
And so, it's, it's moving forward. Now, when you work with a TAP grant, first of all, SCDOT administers that, so they do all the engineering. Once they go ahead and they do the preliminary engineering, and they have either some plans or some conceptual plans, those should come always back to the city for final approval, just like we're going to be talking next Tuesday about wooden bridges. You know, some plans are coming back, and now it's in council's hands, where do we go from here? It's going to be the same for the bike paths, where do we go from here?
But keep in mind, too, that Tom Lex gave us a flow chart that he developed, which clearly shows that the city will be involved in anything affecting parking.
That's right.
Now, I'm not sure where that is structured.
Parking or final plans, any, any change whatsoever on that street has got to come back to the council.
Parking will be a consideration.
Always.
And that has not been the case up until now.
But it comes to council, but it hasn't been through any commission.
No, it has not.
And I guess that's my concern, we don't have a citizens' group, you know, we're citizens, but sometime we get lost.
Let's make it where I'll go through planning commission before it comes to us.
And we could just, we could have planning commission vet that process. They, through their comprehensive plan, that's part of their purview, is looking at transportation, and they could, and that, that's the best route to lead the charge. It's certainly not design review, it's not BZA.
I'm trying to be as positive I can about my complaint.
And Haiti, have you...
My basic complaint is that our citizens' groups that should be looking at this haven't been doing it. And I think we, we need to vote on that at the next meeting, to have that group go through, and they should be leading it, because that's a transportation plan.
I don't think you need to vote on it.
Okay. That's, that's my whole point.
Process will go through planning commission before it comes to us.
And they will, will they get citizens' input, Rob, as to...
Well, every time it goes before the planning commission, the planning commission always has a public hearing. Their, their general processes, they have a...
Posted.
Have a meeting, a lot of times a work session to talk about an item, and once you get that information back and forth, then it goes the next month to a full hearing.
And it's posted before that public meeting, too, so the neighborhood will know about it.
I mean, and every time that something, any major roadway improvement is proposed, there's public meetings and public hearings, and again, going through the planning commission would be an ideal way to do it.
But this one that's coming through now has already been signed, sealed, and delivered.
Just to get the grant. Nothing has been done on the grant, and this is the ideal time to say, okay, when the highway department finally has the conceptual plan or preliminary plans, they could go to the planning commission with those. And again, depending on what you hear, it could come back to city council at that point. There should always be a process in all of this, and that's what we've been trying to follow for the last number of months, and I think that process has worked well. And we'll just have to emphasize that with the new city manager as to how you want these processes to proceed.
Okay. Well, I think from two or three meetings ago, on page 124 of the decision logic, it goes from the committee, BPAC committee, then the city employees coordinate with SCDOT. All right, so it's been bypassed.
Sure.
Thank you for...
Yeah, we'll take care of that.
All right, thank you.
Since we have a rain delay here, and since this is my last really semi-official council meeting, next meeting, I'll be here, I'll preside over the meeting, because John will be just literally stepping in on Monday. I did want to say a few things. I don't know what I'm going to say, but I wanted to say a few things.
The time, figure it out.
One...
You're a long rainstorm, so...
Yeah, I get one, I don't know how long the shower will be, but I get, whatever time. I wanted to thank council. We, we had to go through a lot of trying situations and difficult areas, and I know it has not always been easy. We have not always 100% agreed with me or each other, but I believe we're in a much better situation today than we were a few months ago. We have a number of projects through CPST that are moving rapidly forward. The senior youth center is, is starting, we've got the architect, we've got the alley moving forward with the engineering, we got the North Side Regional Recreation Center going forward. We, we're waiting to hear any day now on the Publix one, we got the SIB agreements approved...
The Perry Park.
Perry Park with the restrooms. There's a number of large projects that have gone forward and got your approval, but we've also gotten several things re-straightened out as far as structuring with council. But that couldn't have been done without your help, but most importantly, I want to say this to the staff, this is where I get choked up. You have an excellent number of department heads. Every one of them have given their heart and soul to the city. Without them, none of this could be achieved, and I can't say enough. Kim Coleman, Tommy Paradise, they... Kim Coleman, Tommy Paradise, they have stepped in as interims for the last ten months, nine months. Not an easy position, because not only they stepped in as the interim directors, but they've done all the things that they were doing, probably a couple of years thinking, well, if they've done this for ten months, we really need to replace them. We need to replace them. And I don't know what their future's going to be with each of those departments, but they have done a tremendous job. The other department heads, again, I could sit here and tell you the struggles that Tim and I have gone through, and it's been a good struggle in, in getting solid waste to where it's at as an enterprise fund, the recycling with Norman Donegan. Charles Beranko and I have looked at public safety, we've made some major changes as far as some of the positions, animal control. We were able to address early on the salary increases for public safety. We're getting ready to hire a number of folks I'll be meeting with next week to, to go through the final process. George has, he, he'll wear you down if you're not careful. He's got so many things going on. It seems like every day, we're, we're in conversation, looking at things, trying to determine where best to go. You've got a great new director there. Kim for fifteen years or longer, I don't know how long you've been director, but you've been there a long time, and, and she has her pulse on it. And, and I know that Kim and I don't always agree on everything, but we have some great conversations as to the financing and how best to do it, and she has some great knowledge. And then Alicia back there, just came back from Disney World, so she's kind of in a fantasy land right now anyways. And we like to think of Aiken as a fantasy land at times, but Jess has been tremendous and has really keyed into a number of different areas, and has approached things differently with staff and how things should change in the future, looking at how we could go ahead and get that merit increase, and doing everything that I've asked of her in the past number of months. And then there's Stuart. Wow. He is, he's, he's not only the right-hand man for the manager, he's the left hand, and if he had a third hand, he'd be that too. But anything that I've asked of Stuart, he has done it and done it in a tremendous manner. And I know that each of you have turned to him for a number of things. I know he'll serve John well, and I know his future is very bright. And you just have tremendous staff, not only here with the department heads, but throughout the whole city. So as Dick was saying, we should be encouraged, not discouraged, with some of these things. That we do have a bright future, and it's because of each and every one of our employees and the department heads who lead them day in and day out. So thank you.
Well, thank you too.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. Roger, you've been a Godsend to us. We thank the Lord for that. And your knowledge and, and your expertise and everything else that goes with it. And thank you so much. You'll be here next time.
There's not a next time. Let's hope there's not a next time.
Next, next two weeks is what I mean.
At what point in the next meeting will, will John be sworn in?
At the very beginning of the meeting.
Very beginning, okay.
He'll be sworn in, then he'll take a seat there. So, and, and John and I have been literally, I've probably been on the phone with him ten hours, about every other day. We talk for about an hour on different things, and we're sending him lots of emails, and he's probably tired of it all.
Have you considered maybe gathering about thirty minutes early so we can informally-
Yeah, we're going to have a, we're going to have a reception in there, in room two-oh-four with council, and, and he will be here. He'll probably be arriving either Friday, that, I think it's the twenty-fourth, or that Saturday, twenty. I know on Saturday, before the council meeting, he and I are going on about a four- or five-hour journey throughout the city and looking at things, and then we'll spend all day money with staff. And I got a top twenty or so people for him to meet in the first couple of weeks. So if, if there's somebody you think should be on that list, please let me know.
As a matter of fact, I wouldn't be surprised if he, I would not be surprised if he's not watching us right now.
Hi, John.
Way to him. I have one special request. I'm part of a committee that is resurrecting the Memorial Day Parade, and we have it scheduled for May twenty-third in downtown Aiken, and the J.C.'s are working with us. And I know there are several restrictions as to what you can, you can't sell anything, you can't hand out anything, but the D.A.R. has offered to buy and donate a thousand flags to us, and we would like to give them out to everyone attending the parade. And I just wanted to see if you guys would just make this exception and allow us to distribute the flags, give them out.
They've, they've been done that every year. I mean, that is-
Yeah, I don't think you need any permission.
Well, they said that we were restricted, so they wanted-
Who's "they"?
The J.C.'s thought that we were.
What you mean, running out and giving somebody a card as a car goes by? You're not talking about that.
No, we were, we were just passing out the, the flags, the American flags.
That should be not a problem at all.
No, at all. Okay.
Well, we had the-
I wanted to make sure. I was asked to make sure that we were doing it right, so.
Absolutely.
Are we going to stop certain politicians from going along handing out their business card? I mean, that hasn't, that's, that goes on every time. I'd rather get America the flag, to tell you the truth.
And if any of you are interested in participating in the parade, there is no fee this year. You want to ride in and represent council or your business, just let me know by Wednesday. Please, thank you.
By Wednesday, okay. Very good, very good, okay. Anything else? Okay.
Had a good, good meeting, a lot of good discussion.
We are adjourned.